Okay, we will call to order the June 17th, 2014 meeting of the Glendale City Council. May I have a roll call, please?
Council members Friedman.
Here.
Darian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Sananian.
Mayor Protem Quintero.
Here. The flag salute will be led by Councilmember Friedman, the invocation by Rebecca Holden of the Church of Jesus Christ Latter Day Saints.
I invite you to join me in doing our pledge of the flag.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Ryan standing for the invocation, presented by Rebecca Holden, Church of Jesus Christ Latter Day Saints.
Our dear heavenly Father, we are so grateful to be here this night at this council meeting. And we pray for special blessing upon these proceedings tonight. We pray for our council members that they will be blessed with wisdom to know how to manage the affairs of our beautiful city. We pray for all those who are presenting business here tonight, that they will be blessed to be able to articulate their positions and that they will be able to communicate and be heard with mutual respect and understanding. Father, we are so very grateful for our beautiful and wonderful country and our state and this city. Father, we pray that the leaders of nations may know how to judge and guide us to eliminate strife found throughout the world. Father, help us to individually do our part because we recognize that peace begins with us and it begins with our striving to increase our righteousness and to follow Thee, Father. Again, we are so very grateful to be here and these favors and blessings we ask in Thy holy name, amen.
Mr. Clerk, may we have your report?
Agenda for the June 17th, 2014 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council is postponed on Thursday, June 12th, 2014 on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
What's next?
Next is presentation and appointments at 3:00 A. is agenda preview for the meetings of Tuesday, June 24th, 2014.
Spears.
Mayor Protem Quintero, members of the City Council, if you'd bear with me as I read these items into the record for our preview coming up for June 24th. For the Glendale Housing Authority, to commence at 3:00 P. M., we have two items under business agenda, Director of Community Development, proposal to retroactively apply a new refinancing subordination policy of the first-time homebuyer program. Director of Community Development, implementation of the fiscal year 2014-15 Housing Authority budget. That afternoon, we do have a special meeting of the Glendale City Council. We have one item, public hearing, Director of Community Development, and this is proposed general plan MAP amendment and rezoning of 10 properties along Fernando Court and Cypress Street, and this was continued from previous meetings. That evening for the Glendale City Council meeting, under consent, we have a number of items that I'll be reading from the General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, mechanical and field services for the Grayson Power Plant, General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, asbestos hazardous materials abatement project, renewal of the city's policy establishing priority for water and sewer services for affordable housing to lower-income households. Also from GWP Manager, software and professional services in support of outage management system, distribution management system, and electric supervisory control and data acquisition and authorizing purchase of the replacement of this hardware. General Manager of GWP and our CIO EMC maintenance support, Director of Public Works, future phases of the implementation of the Glendale Bicycle Transportation Plan. Director of Public Works, City of Glendale's participation in the L.A. region imagery acquisition consortium program. Director of Library Arts and Culture and Public Works, this is regarding interior design work at Bran Library and Art Center. Director of Community Services and Parks and Public Works, we have proposed changes in the rodent side policy on the use of contract supersized blocks and a second-generation pesticide product that we'll be introducing. Director of Community Services and Parks, grant funding, this is received from the County of L.A. for senior services meals. CIO, replacement networking equipment. Also Chief Information Officer, expansion of the scope of work to develop additional functionality to the city's permitting system, which is CSI, to include a central cashiering module and a citizen access portal. Chief of Police, destruction of certain police department records, documents, and papers. Chief of Police, request to purchase an analytical DNA workflow processing software for our DNA lab. Chief of Police, request to purchase computer forensic laboratory software equipment. City Clerk, legal advertising contract for the City of Glendale. Director of Public Works, this is the acceptance of an irrevocable offer to dedicate a public alley easement and right-of-way, and this is on 416 East Broadway. Director of Public Works, Central Library renovation project, and this is to go out for bid. Under action items, we have a number of items, Director of Community Development, consideration of the Housing Authority Tenant Commission recruitment process. General Manager of GWP, Park Manor Reservoir Rehab Project. CIO, installation and configuration of replacement server and storage equipment for our data center. City Attorney and City Clerk, transfer of City Clerk's transient occupancy tax collection duties to the Department of Administrative Services Finance. City Manager, selection of voting delegates for the League of California Cities Conference to be held in September of this year in Los Angeles. General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, procurement of solar power to meet RPS compliance requirements. And that concludes my report.
Okay, good evening. What's next, sir?
Next item on the agenda at 3:00 B. is the proclamation designating the week of June 22nd through 28th, 2014, as Amateur Radio Week.
All right, and I have a proclamation I'm going to read. Amateur radio has provided emergency communications to our community and to the nation at large when disaster strikes as an integral part of homeland security. There are currently over 500 amateur radio operators licensed by the Federal Communications Commission within the city of Glendale. They are equipped and trained to provide volunteer communication support in time of need. Glendale Emergency Auxiliary Radio Services, better known as G.I.R.S., continues to support our community with communications for parades, runs, hikes, and other events, as well as providing emergency backup communications to the city of Glendale. Then we have the Crescent Valley Radio Club, which provides repeaters that are used by G.I.R.S. in support of community events and backup communications to the city of Glendale. Therefore, as our Sananian, the mayor of the city of Glendale, proclaims a week of June 22nd to 28th, 2014, as Amateur Radio Week, encourages all Glendale residents and employees to acknowledge the support provided to our community by our amateur radio service. Sir Weaver will, you can say a few words if you like.
Joe, do you want to go first?
Mayor Sananian, City Council members and citizens of Glendale, my name is Joe Pardo. I am the City Radio Officer for the City of Glendale. Thank you for your proclamation of Ham Radio Week in the City of Glendale. Field Day falls within Ham Radio Week and is an annual amateur radio exercise, widely sponsored by the International Radio Union Regions, members of organizations encouraging emergency communications, preparedness amongst amateur radio operators. In the United States, it is typically the largest single emergency preparedness exercise in the country, with over 30,000 operators participating each year. This year, it'll be held on June 28th and 29th. I just wanted to say that an organization such as G.I.R.S. can only be as successful as the support we get from the City Council, the mayor, and the city manager, including the Information Services Department. So I really want to thank you for all your support during the years. I'll pass it over to Larry Cohen from the Crescent Valley Radio Club.
I'd like to introduce Mike Lickman, who is the president.
Mike.
Mike is the president of the Crescent Valley Radio Club, which has been in existence since the 1950s, so we've been serving the area for a long time. And Mike will have a few words to say about Ham Radio Field Day.
Thank you very much for this honor, we appreciate it. And I know you get invited to a plethora of activities and you can't make them all, but this is something that would be quite different, I think you'd be entertained that day. Stop on by Verdugo Park on the 28th and 29th, Saturday and Sunday of this month, will be set up in the northern section of the park, will be off-the-grid on solar power, totally. So I think you would get a preview of what we're capable of. So thank you very much again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your support.
3C is the proclamation designating the month of July as Parks and Recreation Month.
Okay, it's a long proclamation because this particular department does an awful lot in the city of Glendale, and we've just been through an election process, so I'm going to start off by reading some statistics. Throughout the city of Glendale, we are fortunate to have 45 parks and park facilities, including 285.5 acres of developed parkland and 5,000 acres of open space, a wide variety of recreational opportunities for the citizens and visitors, including 35 parks, four recreation community centers, which experience over 155,000 visits per year, 155,000 visits per year, nine different day camps, six different locations serving 3,400 families per year, four historical sites, three wilderness parks, and 16 ball fields, a swimming pool, skate park, and a civic auditorium. I think we have some recreational facilities in the city of Glendale. The Community Service and Parks Department promotes health and wellness and offers an array of fitness classes, sports, and recreation programs, cultural events, lifelong learning classes, parks, trails, and facilities for fitness and sports activities, activities for all ages and groups. The Community Service and Parks Department also provides programs to address the basic human service needs of Glendale residents, including senior nutritional meals, case management, youth and family outreach, information and referral, youth employment, youth life skills training, homeless case management prevention and housing, and job training programs. The Community Services and Parks Department strengthens the community's safety and security and reduces juvenile crime while focusing on young people's development and growth into productive adults through an array of after-school and seasonal programs. The strength of Glendale is increased through intergenerational recreation programs and events for all ages that allow people to play and grow together while providing the opportunity for residents to lead balanced, rewarding, and healthy lives. Therefore, as our Sananian, mayor of the city of Glendale, proclaims July 2014 as Parks and Recreation Month. Go ahead.
Mayor Protem Quintero, members of council, members of city staff, I'm Mark Sturdivant, Senior Administrative Analyst for Community Services and Parks. With me tonight is Dottie Sharkey, the president of the Glendale Parks and Open Space Foundation, Shont Sahakian, the vice president of the foundation, and Jeff Weinstein, who is a consultant to the foundation. I also have two very special young people with me who I will introduce to you in a moment, but I want to begin by thanking you for recognizing July as Parks and Recreation Month in Glendale. The national theme for Parks and Recreation Month is "Out Is In." And in appreciation of that idea, I want to tell you a little bit about a program that we recently launched where "out" is very definitely "in." The Community Services and Parks Department, particularly our Trails and Open Space Program, has a very special relationship with the Glendale Parks and Open Space Foundation. When budget cuts eliminated Trails and Open Space a few years ago, it was the foundation that picked up the ball, and first by funding our Third Saturday Wilderness Workdays and our interpretive programs up at Duke Magin Wilderness Park. Then they funded our Trail Maintenance Crew, who has restored all of the trails in the park and built a couple of new ones. They then funded our Volunteer Trail Safety Patrol, who did last year 96 patrols in our 5,000 acres of open space. And most recently, they have funded a new program that we introduced this past March. It's called the GO program, and it stands for Glendale Outdoors. The GO program is a nature education program designed to bring kids from the urban areas of our city into Glendale's great outdoors. Working with the Pacific and Maple Park Community Centers, we are reaching out to kids between the ages of eight and 12 who would not ordinarily have an opportunity to spend time in a wild and natural area. This is our effort to move kids away from their TV sets and their smartphones and instead connect them to the environment, provide an understanding of nature, give them an appreciation of the outdoors, and create a new generation of environmental stewards. The research is overwhelming. Kids live richer, healthier lives when they have an opportunity to play in the outdoors. So four times a year, our community centers provide the participants, the foundation provides the bus transportation, and the food, and the snacks, and the materials, and Jeff designs and implements a program that includes outdoor games, team building, nature crafts, hikes, and other outdoor activities, all up in our own Duke Magin Wilderness Park. Our next program, our next GO program, is Saturday, July the 5th, and we invite anyone between the ages of eight and 12 to sign up at either Pacific or Maple Park Community Center and be part of the GO program. And now I want to introduce two of the participants from the GO program that we had back in March. Please say hello to Kai Schroeder and to Mingwei Fascale, who will tell you a little bit about their experience with the GO program. Who wants to go first?
Okay. So, my name is Kai, and I went to the school of Verdugo Woodlands. I went to the GO program with my friends. We hiked, made crafts, which I still have, and I had a great time there. I would love to participate again in the next GO program activity. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mingwei. I really enjoyed the GO program. The hike was, it was very pretty, watching the scenery. We learned a lot of things, and we got to go outdoors and not sit at home watching TV all day. They had plenty of snacks, so we were never hungry. And I went with my friends, and I met a lot of nice people. It was very fun.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. I just wanted to give Dottie Sharkey and/or Shont Sahakian an opportunity to say a few words if they're still inclined.
Council, council members, city staff, we just want to thank you for giving us this opportunity to highlight some of the programs, but we want to especially thank Jeff and everyone that he works with, Jeff and Mark. It's a partnership that we have with the department, which we would not be able to do as much as we do because of it. So we just want to thank them for all their hard work, and it's been a great relationship, and we're looking forward to continuing and doing bigger and better things in our parks and outdoor spaces. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I want to recognize Jess Duran, who's the Director of Parks and Community Services, a longtime city employee who's in the audience.
Mr. Quintero, if I could add to it, my daughter and husband put our granddaughter into the summer program at Verdugo Park. Yesterday was the first day. When she got home, her father asked, "How did you like the, like doing that?" She says, "I didn't like it, I loved it." And today, they were at the water park, but I wish she's never been there, so I can't wait to hear tonight what she thought of that event. So it's a great program.
Okay, very good. What's next?
Mr. Mayor Protem, per the reordering of the council agendas, that is now part of the permanent order of business of this body, the following item is consent items. Following a routine that may be acted upon by one motion, a member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such a request before a motion is proposed.
Okay, I would like to pull F and G because I think I'd just like to have a little more information about it and have the public understand what we're doing.
I'll move the remainder of the consent calendar.
In a second.
Second.
Roll call.
Council members Friedman.
Yes.
Darian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Sananian. Mayor Protem Quintero.
Yes, will you read F into the record?
Item F is General Manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding revision of the Glendale Water Power Energy Risk Management Policy.
F or G, sir? F and G.
F and G. F1 is a motion approving the revised policy.
Okay, just a brief.
Mr. Mayor Protem, members of the council, the city's energy risk management policy is a policy that we should be, in my opinion, coming back to council each year with, with the renewal and approval for the upcoming year. That hadn't happened for several years. We did get it back to you last year, made some significant revisions. This is the document that guides us internally in some of the decisions we make in regards to our trading operations, setting limits, the type of credit we're going to expect, the type of individuals within the organization who can approve trades and at what level they can approve them. Most of the revisions this year center around the ever-changing regulatory environment in which we live, so we're adding a lot of vernacular that is associated with renewable energy credits, carbon offsets, carbon credits, getting those into the glossary and setting those up, because those are all items that can be traded, instruments that can be used and traded in the market. We also had left out a pretty prominent position within our operation, the trading manager, so we needed to get that title in there so that they could be able to officially trade at the levels that we set for them. And we cleaned some things up with regards to gas, setting the gas limits that are more appropriate with the actual usage at Magnolia and Grayson. And then we had some outdated information from the Cal ISO in there that we just eliminated. So a lot of that was routine, but this document then will guide us through the next year, and we will continue to come back annually with revisions as we have them.
Okay, very good. It is a prudent and necessary function for a utility to be able to do this. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Council members Friedman.
Yes.
Darian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Sananian. Mayor Protem Quintero.
Yes, G, please.
He's Director of Public Works regarding Next Bus Real-Time Passenger Information Systems for the city's Beeline Transit Service. G1 is a motion authorizing execution of a renewal contract with Next Bus Inc. for a five-year term commencing on July 1st, 2014 and ending on June 30th, 2019, with the option to renew for an additional five-year term in the amount of $331,086. G2 is a resolution appropriating $121,692 to fund the contract renewal.
Okay, I'd like to have the public know what we're doing and...
Sure. Mr. Mayor Protem, members of the council, let me ask Silva Bagdanian to come up. She works in our transit department, and this is her baby, so to speak, so she'll give you a brief overview of a very successful program.
Good evening, council members. My name is Silva Bagdanian, I'm Assistant Transit Manager. Next Bus is a real-time passenger information system, which our passengers can actually use when they're out and about. Typically, on their PDAs, they can actually, on their smartphones. Next Bus is very intuitive. It has an app that you can, if you are using your smartphone, you're at one of the stops. It will automatically pick up the stop using GPS, and it will pop up with all of the bus routes, not only Beeline, but all of the bus routes, including Metro, that are out here on the corner, for instance. I was using it earlier, and I had Metro Line 90, 91, 180. I had Beeline routes 3 and 4, 11, popping up for this corner right here. So it's a very, a very great product for our customers. It provides them with information. They don't have to stand out there waiting for a bus, always wondering. They can actually use the system to find out when the next bus is coming. They can also look it up online on a computer if they're in their offices. And on the back end, it actually provides us with information for us to track our on-time performance, and it gives us tools where we can actually use to also look at our scheduling for all of the routes. I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Mr. Friedman.
I just want to say, as a Beeline rider, I use Next Bus all the time. I know exactly how long it takes to walk from my house to Central and Stalker, and it's 15 minutes, which is fine. And I always look first because, well, the bus is every 20 minutes, but you still want to know, you don't want to miss it and have to wait 20 minutes. It's a little hard to navigate sometimes. I mean, I find the GPS thing doesn't always work for me, so I have to navigate to the state, to the city, the whole thing, and then you have to know the number you want. But when you find all that, it's great, and it really is down to the second. I mean, it'll say minute, and you see that bus coming. It works very, very well. And for some of the routes where the buses run less frequently, it's a must. I know not everybody has a smartphone, I think more and more people do, but I see a lot of the bus riders out there using Next Bus. I see a lot of people on smartphones, and I always hope that they know about Next Bus. Do we, we promote it at the bus stops, don't we?
We do not promote them at bus stops, but it is on all of our materials onboard the buses. We do have bus cards onboard the buses, and it is announced on our website. So we do try to advertise it whenever we can, but our usual method of advertising is onboard the vehicles to capture the most passengers.
Well, it's a great service.
I'm glad to hear that.
Okay, thank you for the info.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
Move the item.
Second.
Roll call.
Council members Friedman.
Yes.
Darian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Sananian. Mayor Protem Quintero.
Yes, next, please.
Next item is City Council and Staff Comments.
Staff comments, Ms. Friedman.
Just a couple comments. Last Wednesday, I think it was, I attended the Officers' Installation Brunch for Glendale Beautiful. It was very well-attended. In fact, they had the back room at Damon's, and it was packed. It was so crowded, it was hard to get up and move around. There was a really interesting presentation by a scientist, I think from Caltech, about climate change and the threat that it is giving all of us and some potential solutions. It was great to have such a meaty presentation at a Glendale Beautiful event. I hope to see more of that kind of presentation. And I want to congratulate all of the incoming officers and to thank all of the outgoing officers, some of whom are the same people. And if you're interested in beautifying Glendale and the mission that they have, I encourage you to look them up and get involved, they're a great organization. Last week, I also attended a brunch called the Women Mean Business Awards. This is an annual event that's usually done in Pasadena and hosted by our state senator Carol Lou. It's a wonderful event that honors women from throughout her senate area, which is a large area. A lot of women from our area were awardees, and it's great to see the wonderful things that women from all over the region are doing in business, in all kinds of areas, in entertainment. But I wanted to call one woman out in particular who is honored, which was Patricia Larrigan, who was one of our police officers until, I believe, last week. She retired, and she was a wonderful Glendale police officer, and it was wonderful to see her awarded, and I want to congratulate her in particular. And lastly, I wanted to, this is a little bit off-topic, but I wanted to wish my daughter, Rachel, a happy first birthday. Yesterday was her birthday. I can't believe it was only a year ago, well, it was a year ago already, that we got a phone call. I was at the Glendale, the Montrose Farmers Market, I'll never forget it, on a Sunday morning, and I got a phone call that our baby was being born and could we fly to New York that day. And we did, and it was the most nerve-wracking flight I've ever had for many reasons. But we became a family that night, and it's... But we became a family that night and it's been a wonderful thing. This community has been so welcoming and so encouraging of Rachel, our daughter. So thanks to everybody who's come over and wished us well and seen her and put up with her photos on my Facebook page and everything else. And if you're watching, Rachel, happy birthday.
Hard to top that. Mr. Weaver.
No, I can't, I can't top that. As you may know, the Glendale Rose float is not in the budget this year. It's been a tradition for 100 years, I think the oldest one in Glendale. If we're to have the 101st float, we would have to appropriate funds probably next week for the float. Over 600, mainly students work on the float every year and it is a tradition. So I was wondering if there's another of my colleagues that would be willing to put on agenda next week a discussion of appropriating the money for the float, come from some source, maybe savings or whatever down the line. Is there a second for that? Anybody join me? Now, folks, that's the end of the Glendale Rose float for over 100 years. It's too bad.
Okay, well, not necessarily. What I would like to do is talk about, just like we had a Parks Foundation presentation a little bit earlier in terms of all that they do, what the city of Glendale can do about getting some sort of nonprofit going. I think we'd have to work with the city attorney, but have a, I don't know if we'd call it an independent nonprofit, something linked to the city, but something that clearly is funded by outside sources. That's where I stand on that issue. I don't know.
Would you like that to be agenda, a discussion on that at some point?
I would have that discussion about a nonprofit with the float.
Okay, yep.
I just have one item and I'd like to remind parents who have young boys that tomorrow is the self-defense classes for boys. There won't be any girls in there with you, just boys. And you'll be learning techniques to defend yourself against assault, against bullying. And we are a gender equal city council, and this is a new class that we've just instituted this year in conjunction with the classes offered for girls. It's not too late. You need to call 818-548-2000. That's 818-548-2000 to give them your name. It's at 6:30 tomorrow in the police community room. Thank you.
Just for young kids or men, too?
I believe there's a limit of 18 years old, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay.
Open up. Men, too? Or just, oh, adults? Boys and men?
I'll enroll if you will, Mr. ...
You know, sometimes I need some self-defense skills up here.
Okay, next, please.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, if I may, just for anyone watching who may wonder, well, I voted on June, but my television set may need adjusting because I don't see the winner of the election sitting up there. Not that it's not wonderful to see still sitting there. The county must certify the election results because this election was consolidated with the county. Indeed, the results are on our website, via the county's website, and show what the outcome was. But once the county certifies, the county board of supervisors certifies the canvas, then we may do so as well and we will seat the new council member. We will be providing information on that on our city website. I'm sure our PIO will put out a press release through the city manager's office, as well as we will be tweeting about it, and I'm sure it'll be out there in all sorts of other forms, including the newspapers. But just to let people know, you have been gracious enough to continue to serve until that time. And so, until then, which will probably be July 1st or 8th, when it goes to the county board of supervisors, you will be still here.
Right, I have been told, and I don't mean to imply that I'm a hostage in any way, but I have been told that absolutely either July 1st or the 8th will be my last function here on the dais, the last time I'm in the city.
May I ask the clerk, in lieu of the official certification by the county recorder, in the event that the other candidates concede the election, may the new council member be seated?
I am not an attorney, nor do I play one on TV, so I will defer to our city attorney to give his interpretation of that.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council, the county needs to certify the results before that Ms. Devine can be sworn in.
Okay, next, please.
Next item is Community Event Announcements. This is a three-minute community event announcement portion, which is now part of, again, this new order of agenda business.
All right, and I have one. Card Lisa Bubari.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, Frank Quintero, and city council and staff. My name is Lisa Bubari. I am the incoming president of the Seroptimist International of the Verdugos. Seroptimist is an international volunteer organization working together to improve the lives of women and girls through programs leading to social and economic empowerment, and that's what we aspire to do. On behalf of our club president, currently Edith Fuentes, our board members and our club members, I am here to formally invite you all and the community to join us Sunday the 29th at Pickwick Bowl from 12 noon until 4:00. It is our 10th annual bowling fundraising against breast cancer. We hope you could join our special guests, members, and team players. We've come a long way. Seroptimist International of the Verdugos is hosting this. And Pickwick is located at 921 Riverside Drive in Burbank. It is open to all who would like to come and bowl, even children, and we've got trophies and everything for them. Proceeds raised from this bowling event will again help our projects targeted for women and children, primarily providing assistance to local women experiencing challenges as a result of fighting and living with breast cancer. For the past nine years, we have given out more than $110,000 directly to breast cancer patients needing financial help and assistance. We'd like to take this opportunity to say thank you to many of our local businesses and sponsors like Glendale Management Association, Sempra Energy, Pickwick, and many more. We'd be honored by your presence, and I know for a fact that Mayor Zara Sinanian is going to roll the first ball to start the bowling, and we would like you to be amongst many. We're extending our invitation to staff and community, and you may call us at 818-636-6534 or 818-736-1911 for further information. And I look forward to having you all come and join us at Pickwick. You may also find us at Facebook under Seroptimist of the Verdugos. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you. Next, please.
Next item, under Action Items, 8A is General Manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding GWP Annual Authority for the Purchase or Sale of Energy Services. 8A1 is a resolution dispensing with competitive bidding and authorizing execution of a contract for the purchase or sale of energy services not to exceed five years.
Mr. Chau.
Yes, sir. Every year, we come to you asking for this special dispensation as we buy and sell and trade energy on a weekly, daily, sometimes an hourly basis. And to do a competitive bid for each one of those types of transactions would not be very practical. And so pursuant to the risk management policy that you've adopted and the structure that exists today, we would ask for your agreement to allow us this authority for the purchase and sale. If you have any specific questions, certainly Mr. Zern or his team can answer those.
Questions?
I'll move the item.
Second.
Roll call.
Council members, Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Sinanian. Mayor Pro Tem, Quintero.
Yes, next.
Directors of Public, and 8B is Directors of Public Works and Community Services and Parks regarding Palmer Park and Pacific Park Playground Equipment Replacement Project in connection with specification number 3542. V1 is a resolution adopting plans and spec and directing the city clerk to authorize for bids.
This is a very exciting presentation we'd like to make. Certainly, going out to bid on plans and specs is the business part of this item, the resolution that we would request of the city council. But we'll have Emile Tadevosiyan come up and give you a very brief overview of all of the great work that's been done over the last year or so regarding our community and quality of life facilities. Emile?
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council, as you know, Community Services and Parks takes great pride in the quality of the amenities that are available in our parks for the community's enjoyment. In that vein, in that effort, we annually inspect our playgrounds and do a maintenance log of which playgrounds need to be replaced based on their court compliance, as well as their practicality and life expectancy. This program has been ongoing since 2008 and our first round of equipment was replaced last year. This is just some of the projects that you had approved in the past. Dunsmore Park, Verdugo Park, and New York Park are three of the parks that are located in northern Glendale that all received new park equipment, playground equipment. Verdugo Park, you may recall, was a donated play structure from the Americana ad brand. Currently, we are finishing the brand-new, excuse me, construction of a brand-new park at Maryland Park, and that will be getting a brand-new play structure as well. Next will be Brand Park, and we're hoping that by the end of September, the new structure will also be installed. The item before you specifically for Pacific and Palmer, before I get to that, let me show you the pictures of the completed play structures. The one on the top left is Verdugo Park, which I mentioned earlier was a donated play structure from the Americana ad brand. Oops, excuse me. This one here is a brand-new structure at New York Park, and the one at the bottom is, again, a brand-new structure at Dunsmore Park. This was the second phase of Dunsmore Park. The playground for the younger kids was replaced back in 2008, along with many other parks during that effort. The item before you is specifically for Pacific Park and Palmer Park. As you know, Palmer Park, this is a misnomer, this should say Maple Park. No, this is Palmer Park, pardon me. You may recall that Palmer Park is under design currently, and as part of that effort, we're also replacing the play structure. But while the design's being finalized, the design's not impacting the location of the play structure. I will get to it in a minute. This is the existing structure at Pacific Park, which, as you can tell, is really outdated and it's lived its life. This is the new proposed play structure at that site. This shows a picture of the existing, really tired and dilapidated play structure at Palmer Park. As I mentioned earlier, this area will not be impacted by the redesign or the improvements of the park area. That area is being preserved so that the play structures could be replaced while the rest of the project is being designed. I should, and this is the proposed play structure for Palmer Park. I should mention that the funding for these two projects is being provided through Community Development Block ad funds. I'm going to go back earlier to show you this slide, which demonstrates the different funding sources that we have been able to leverage to spend roughly about $1 million in replacing the play structures. This would conclude the first round of the play structure replacement program, or I should say the second round, and we have some breathing room before the next round needs to be replaced to remain court compliant with codes and to extend their life expectancy at the parks. I will be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions? Your nun, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a motion.
So moved.
Roll call.
Council members, Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Sinanian. Mayor Pro Tem, Quintero.
Yes, next.
Next item, C is Director of Public Works Regarding Parking Citation Processing, Delinquent Collection, and Preferential Parking Permit Program Services. C1 is a motion authorizing execution of a professional services agreement with Professional Account Management LLC, an operating entity of Duncan Solutions Inc., in an amount not to exceed $1,312,500 for a five-year period, with one additional two-year renewal option and rejecting all other proposals.
Okay, do we need a presentation?
We're ready to give you whatever level of presentation.
I'm okay with it.
I know that you, very late this afternoon, received some information from the city attorney regarding a protest that we had from the, one of the firms that wasn't successful. They're actually the firm that currently provides the service. And we also provided you all of the backup information, which I think refutes most, if not all, of the assertions made in the letter by the individual. This was well-vetted and I think one of the bones of contention on the firm that wasn't successful is that the successful firm was able to give us a lot more features while keeping the price down. And as you can see and hear, this $187,500 per year is firm for not only the five years of the agreement, but also the two option years. So there's not even any inflator in there. And we've done business with this company and feel very comfortable with them. And staff has done a lot of work on this. We've been doing this for quite some time. This dates back to 2013, so we feel comfortable. We have Mr. Galanian and his parking staff here if you have any specific questions.
And you've also worked with police, I assume, obviously?
Yes.
Review the bids and so forth. Okay, well, I'm comfortable. I mean, the report pretty well spells it out.
I'll move eight C1.
Second.
Roll call.
Council members, Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Sinanian. Mayor Pro Tem, Quintero.
Yes, next, please.
9A is Hearing Director of Public Works Regarding Levy and Collection of Annual Assessment of the North San Fernando Road Corridor Landscape Maintenance District for fiscal year 2014-15. 9A1 is a resolution approving the engineer's annual levy report. 9A2 is a resolution ordering the levy and collection of annual assessments.
This is our annual step that we do for the assessment district. We have the report from the engineer ready for your approval, and then we just commence with the levying of the annual assessment for the San Fernando Road Corridor. If you have any specific questions, Mr. Galanian, I'm sure can answer those.
I assume our staff, more or less, does the maintenance work right? We're not contracting?
Some of it is contracted through Parks' contract maintenance, yes. Most of it, I think, is done by our own folks.
I drove by not long ago and noticed it's looking good. I mean, there's a few patches that are problematic, but for the most part, what an improvement.
Yeah, where there is construction, we generally, it'll look a little rough and then we'll come back and fix it after.
And that railroad track side is not included in this. That's something we, and that usually is where you find most of the problem, although we, with Parks, try to stay on top of that as well.
Yeah, try to reach over and do some of the work for them. But no, all in all, I mean, it's been a big improvement. It took quite a while, as we all remember, for it to finally happen, but it's worked out real well.
We've kept the cost the same as last year and we had no protests.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Going to open the hearing and...
Yeah, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone that wants to speak on the item? I hear not.
Close the public hearing.
I'll move 9A1 and 2.
Second.
Roll call.
Council members, Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Sinanian. Mayor Pro Tem, Quintero.
Yes, next, please.
Next item is Oral Communication. There were no cards submitted.
Part of my mayorship. So happy.
Two weeks.
City is so content at this point. Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Are adjourned. Are adjourned.[1741.42]